All right, good evening. Let's come to order and go on the record, please. I'm Charlotte Mitchell, Chair of the Utilities Commission. Joining me this evening by way of remote connection are Commissioners Kimberly Duffley. Good evening, Kim, and Commissioner Jeffrey Hughes.
Good evening.
Good evening, Commissioner Hughes. All right, I now call for hearing docket numbers W-1333-0 and W-1130-11 in the matter of application by Currituck Water and Sewer LLC and Sandler Utilities at Mill Run LLC for authority to transfer the Sandler Utilities at Mill Run wastewater system and public utility franchise in Currituck County, North Carolina, and for the approval of rates. Before we proceed further, and as is required by the State Government Ethics Act, I remind members of the Commission of our duty to avoid conflicts of interest and inquire at this time as to whether any member of the Commission has a known conflict of interest with respect to the matters coming before us this evening. All right, the record will reflect that no conflicts have been identified, so we'll proceed. On May 19th, 2021, Currituck Water and Sewer LLC and Sandler Utilities at Mill Run LLC filed with the Commission an application by which Currituck and Sandler seek authority to transfer the wastewater utility system and public utility franchise serving the Eagle Creek subdivision, the Eagle Creek Golf Club, and the Moyoc Middle School from Sandler to Currituck. The application also seeks the approval to charge certain rates. The present rates charged by Sandler were approved by this Commission and have been in effect since December 9th, 2016. Upon acquisition of the system, Currituck proposes to charge the current rates that Sandler is charging. The intervention and participation of the public staff in this proceeding is recognized pursuant to North Carolina General Statute Section 62-15-D and Commission Rule R-1-19-E. The public staff is the consumer advocate and represents in this proceeding the using and consuming public, that is, Sandler's customers. The public staff will independently investigate the requests being made in this application and will make recommendations to the Commission regarding the transfer. On November 18th, 2021, the Commission issued an order scheduling hearings, establishing discovery guidelines, and requiring customer notice. The order scheduled two public witness hearings to be held remotely by way of WebEx on this date, as well as an expert witness hearing to begin on April 5th. Between October 12th, 2021, and January 31st, 2022, various statements of consumer position have been filed in this docket. The purpose of this evening's hearing is to hear from Sandler's customers regarding their concerns with the pending requests. Each public witness will be given the opportunity to testify under oath to the Commission should he or she wish to do so. Before we move on, I'd like to discuss the procedures we'll follow for this evening. First, public witnesses will be appearing by audio connection only. Commissioners and attorneys will be appearing by video and audio connection. Any public witnesses that wish to view a live video of the proceeding may access it on their computers by way of YouTube, which is linked from the Commission's homepage. However, be sure to mute your computer, I mean, yes, be sure to mute your computers when you're called to testify to avoid feedback and interference with our court reporters' ability to transcribe the proceeding. Public witnesses will be called on to testify in the order that they've called in. When it is your turn to speak, you'll be unmuted by the WebEx Administrator. You'll hear two beeps on your phone line indicating that you've been unmuted. At that time, I ask that you state your name. Then I will deliver the affirmation, and once you have affirmed, the Attorney for the Public Staff will ask you a series of questions. At that point, you'll be allowed to testify. To ensure that this hearing tonight runs as efficiently as possible, please pay close attention during the course of the proceeding and be ready to respond as soon as you hear those two beeps. After you complete your testimony, you may be asked questions by Counsel for the Parties or by the Commissioners. All right, with that, we're ready to begin. I now call upon Counsel to announce their appearances for the record, beginning with Currituck.
Please, Commissioner, my name is Edward Finley. I appear on behalf of Currituck Water and Sewer LLC.
Good evening, Mr. Finley.
Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the Commission. My name is Karen Kimmerite. I'm an attorney with Fox Rothschild in Raleigh, and I'm here on behalf of Sandler Utilities at Mill Run.
Good evening, Ms. Kimmerite. Our public staff?
Good evening, Commissioner. Manisha Magherera of the Public Staff, appearing on behalf of the using and consuming public.
Good evening, Mr. Magherera. All right, it's my understanding that Counsel for Currituck would like to provide a brief opening statement. Mr. Finley, if you would.
Thank you, Chair Mitchell. Currituck Water and Sewer appreciates the opportunity tonight to hear from the Eagle Creek wastewater system consumers on the issue of the company's desire to obtain the Commission approval of its acquisition of the system from Sandler Utilities. CWS recognizes and acknowledges that customers are experiencing service disruptions and environmental issues, and that many are justifiably distressed and concerned. The environmental regulators in the state have placed the system on moratorium, and it is under a consent decree imposing some strict requirements on operations, maintenance, and communications. The CWS is intimately familiar with the system, the moratorium, and the consent decree. The collection system has exceeded its useful life, and improvements are necessary. This opinion is not only held by CWS. The environmental regulators certainly agree. The public staff is currently comprehensively investigating the situation and can be anticipated to weigh in later in the proceeding. CWS recognizes that there is a substantial debate within the community as to whether the vacuum system currently in place, the vacuum collection system, should be replaced or instead should be rehabilitated. CWS recognizes that whatever must be done will result in some continued inconvenience and interruption. CWS has talked with the community and understands that there is a substantial difference of opinion among some as to what should be done. We heard about that earlier today. While a strong case can be made for replacing the vacuum system with a gravity system, CWS is willing to continue dialogue with consumers and regulators and to consider other options. CWS understands that Sandler, the developer of Eagle Creek, desires to sell, and CWS desires to acquire and undertake the necessary steps to improve the system both as to its operations today and into the future. Thank you, Chair Mitchell.
All right, thank you, Mr. Finley. Anyone, Ms. Kimmerite, Mr. Magherera, would you all like the opportunity to make an opening statement?
Not on behalf of Sandler Utilities.
No statement from the public staff.
All right. Okay, we are ready to begin. Mr. McCoy, would you please unmute the first witness?
Hello, my name is Greg Ewing.
Good evening, Mr. Ewing. Do you affirm that the testimony you're about to give shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
All right, Mr. Magherera, take it away.
Mr. Ewing, could you state your full name for the record, please?
It's Gregory Lawrence Ewing.
Thank you. What's your address?
198 Greenview Road, Moyoc, North Carolina, 27958.
Thank you. And are you a sewer customer of Sandler Utilities?
I am.
Great. Please proceed with your testimony.
Yeah, so I am an original homeowner in the Eagle Creek neighborhood. We've lived here since August of 2005. The last couple of years, no secret that there have been a lot of problems here. And prior to September of 2020, we were completely unaware of any issues with the sewer system outside of some major flooding events that had affected certain parts of the neighborhood during storms and such. In the last two years, it has been a challenge to live here. You know, we've only experienced one actual backup at our home that was reported. But almost daily, there's a need to go onto social media to find out whether or not we can flush a toilet, or do laundry, or use any sort of water in the house. And it's a real problem for people, as you can imagine. My experience as a homeowner in dealing with EnviroLink for the one backup we had was not good in terms of responsiveness. I feel like their communication with the neighborhood has been very poor until really very recently, in December, when we started getting daily updates. And even in talking with technicians that have come around, many of them have told me outright that they were inexperienced, they were just hired, they didn't really, weren't able to answer a question for me about whether or not I needed to conserve water. It's been a real challenge, and so we're going with all this as leading up to, I have a lack of confidence in CWS's ability, knowing that there's a relationship to EnviroLink, to properly manage and maintain a system. I have definite concerns about their ability to replace the entire system, and I think the level of disruption that it's going to cause to the neighborhood is not something that can really be comprehended at the moment. There was petitions that were circulated around the neighborhood for a couple of different options to find out what residents preferred. Overwhelmingly, the residents erred on the side of a repair to a system with some stipulations that maintenance be carried out by another party, at least for the first five years. And so I would ask the Commission that if the sale is going to be approved, that it be done, you know, with some conditions attached to it, that the maintenance contract be held by another party who understands the system and, you know, knows how to go about taking care of it, as did, by the way, the prior company that performed the maintenance. Remember, we had no clue there was ever any issues with the sewer system prior to September of 2020. So I would like to ask the Commission to please consider that, the signatures on that petition, what we've asked for in consideration of the impending sale to CWS.
All right, thank you, Mr. Ewing. Let me see if there are questions for you from Counsel, beginning with Counsel for the applicants. Mr. Finley?
No questions from CWS.
All right, Ms. Kimmerite?
No questions from Sandler Utilities.
All right, public staff?
Just a couple of questions. I guess I heard, Mr. Ewing, that you had said that sort of your issues had started, I think, around September 2020, and just wanted to sort of clarify, or I guess just get some context, sort of the performance of the operator beforehand, which I believe was EnviroTech, and the current, I guess, operator who's EnviroLink. Just wanted to get some additional context on that.
Yeah, sure. The changeover for the maintenance happened not long before that. And I'm not attributing that there's a correlation necessarily between them, but referred statements that the system is beyond its usable life, those types of things do not happen in an instant. They happen over time. And, you know, between August of 2005, when we moved into our home, and September of 2020, when the first really big major disruption occurred, I couldn't have even told you who was doing the maintenance, other than the fact that, you know, I saw the name EnviroTech on the bills when they came to the house. We never had a clue that anybody in the neighborhood was having a problem. And, you know, so, you know, that's kind of been our experience since then. You know, it was, you know, we had the major disruption in October of 2020, where there was a period of about two weeks where really, you know, everybody was told, "Don't use any water whatsoever." Since that time, there has been, I couldn't even count how many times we were told the system was down, "Don't use water," which, by the way, only would come through either social media posts by other members of the community, or emails after hours coming from EnviroLink, Customer Service. And, you know, they're not reaching every member of the community even. Because not every, you know, my next-door neighbor, you know, when we had our backup, I had to go and tell him about it. He had no idea that there were any problems in the neighborhood. And our backup occurred months after the problems really started in the neighborhood.
Thank you, Mr. Ewing. And this is sort of implicit in your testimony and some of the statements that you've made already, but I just want to get a sense of, you know, when you've reported these issues to the operator, sort of, or have you reported them, first off, and then second, just what has been just the general response from the operator?
So I've, like I said, we had only one backup at our home, which we reported, and it was fixed within two days. That's the only thing that I've reported directly to the operator. I have attempted to ask questions. We send messages back to EnviroLink Customer Service when the notices have come out about a service disruption. I don't recall ever having received a reply to any of those. I did attend a couple of the meetings here in the neighborhood with Mr. Myers. Again, you know, I raised my concerns there, but, you know, I don't necessarily know that they were heard.
Thank you. And I guess one, potentially two questions. Are you aware, have you heard of the sort of amended consent judgment involving Sandler?
I am not, not aware.
No further questions?
All right, Mr. Ewing, I do have a question for you. I just want to make sure I understand your testimony. So prior to September of 2020, did you have, did you have any experiences or bad experiences in your home with your wastewater service?
No.
Okay. And you were not aware that your neighbors of the experience, your neighbors were having, or whether your neighbors were having bad experiences?
Correct.
Prior to 2020, September 2020?
Correct.
Okay. I heard you testify that EnviroLink's communication has been not good, I think you used "poor," until December. I'm assuming you meant December of last year. Can you?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, so you did mean December of 2021. Will you confirm for me, I mean, what has changed since December? What are they doing differently?
We get an email, I don't know if it's every day, but it's more days than not. We get an email from them explaining, you know, whether or not there were any leaks detected during the day, you know, what technicians had done on site. Generally tells you how many repairs that they made. And then there's a general status of, you know, whether or not all the lines are active, or if there are parts of the neighborhood that are being down. And to be honest, it's a bit ambiguous because I don't necessarily know which lines are where. So we don't necessarily know what to do with it. But it's more than we've gotten in the past, which would be, you know, many, many days of radio silence while we knew that there were substantial problems in the neighborhood.
Okay. And are you aware of whether this communication since December is reaching more or all of your neighbors at this point?
I couldn't say for sure.
Okay, so you don't know whether there's still the same issue of not everyone receiving communication, not everyone in the neighborhood receiving communication?
I suspect that that is probably the case, but I couldn't prove it.
All right, thank you, Mr. Ewing. Let me check in with my colleagues to see if there are any questions for you. Commissioner Duffley, go ahead.
Good evening. You mentioned that you asked some questions, and you still have not received the answers to those questions. Do you still want the answers to those questions?
No, I mean, they were related to, you know, incidents at the time. You know, if we were being told to conserve water, you know, we were asking questions about, okay, you know, you know, when will it come up? Are there certain parts of the neighborhood that are okay? It was really probably specific to those incidents. It would be too late to satisfy the need now.
Okay, thank you. I have nothing further.
I don't have any additional questions, thanks.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Hughes. All right, Mr. Ewing, you are off the hook. No additional questions for you. So thank you very much, sir, for your testimony tonight.
Okay, thank you.
All right, John, would you please unmute the next witness?
Hi, my name is Susan Powers.
Good evening, Ms. Powers. Do you affirm that the testimony you're about to give shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
All right, Mr. Magherera, you may proceed.
Good evening, Ms. Powers. Could you state your full name for the record, please?
My name is Susan, S-U-S-A-N, last name Powers, P as in puppy, O-W-E-R-S.
Thank you. And can you state your address, please?
Is 251 Greenview Road in Moyoc, North Carolina.
Thanks. And are you a customer of Sandler Utilities?
I am.
Thank you. Please proceed with your testimony.
So I apologize, I just got back from work a little bit ago. So it wasn't an opportunity to hear the entire 1:30 presentation, but I did listen to some of it. One of the things I wanted to point out is that Currituck Water and Sewer spent a lot of time trying to convince us that the gravity system is the best route to go. I don't really dispute that. I think if the neighborhood had been built originally with the gravity system, we might not have the issues we have now. I think the concern for most people is the installation of the gravity system at this point. Some people that I had heard mention that they don't trust Mike Myers in anything he says or does. One of the things demonstrating that is they installed a forced main line from the Foss Development into Eagle Creek, and knocked out the internet, electricity several times. They knocked it out to the restaurant, which caused them lost business. They knocked it out to the middle school, which then the students couldn't access the internet. So these major disruptions were just installing this little forced main line from the Foss Track to our treatment plant. And if they couldn't get that right, how can we trust them to do this big, huge, massive project? And I think, too, like I said, they're trying to really spend a lot of time to convince us that the gravity system is the best route to go, but they're, I feel they're glossing over any kind of installation issues. And depending on who you talk to, they could be major and catastrophic. And there is even a mention about when they do water their houses, that the foundations could sink. And one of the things I wanted to talk to you, you know, I have not personally had water in my house, I've been very lucky. But I have been impacted because, first of all, this issue has been reported all over the country. There were, I saw newspaper articles in California about our sewer issue. Anybody I talked to in the course of the day, I work as an insurance agent, I mentioned I live in Old Creek, their eyes lit up and said, "Oh, we know what's going on there." So, you know, if I ever try to sell my house, a simple Google search of Eagle Creek will pull up all these news articles. Another thing, too, I wanted to mention, too, about the communication. At one point, a neighbor in the neighborhood took it upon herself to create a flyer with contact information, actually go door-to-door, hang them door-to-door, because the communication was so lacking from EnviroLink to make sure that everybody had this information, knew what was going on. There are people at the front of the neighborhood, I believe, that have never had a sewer backup and had no clue that anything was going on. And I give the example all the time that they're, you know, showering, bathing, doing laundry, and, you know, people in the back of the neighborhood are having sewer backup in their house. And also, too, one of the questions I heard is about the links. Now, I did create a spreadsheet, and I based this on official emails from Deborah Massey about us being down. And so the count for being out is a total of 98 days. So that's 100 days without being able to shower, laundry, go to the bathroom. The longest outage was in September of 2020 for 31 days. So that's more than a month. And we actually had the Baptist men came with showers and did laundry for us because, and I believe there was also a trailer that people in Currituck County, Carolina, do donations, like cleaning supplies and stuff. So, and I can understand why Currituck Water and Sewer wants the gravity system because they're familiar with it, and that's what they know. And vacuum system's kind of an oddball to them. But also, too, and I don't think that's a good reason to go with a gravity system. So I hope that if they do approve the sale, that they do keep the vacuum system upgraded. And also, no matter what way they go, that they continue to maintain it. One of the things I've mentioned several times is no matter what system they go to, it needs to be maintained. And even a primitive outhouse with a hole dug in the floor, it's got to be maintained. So if they don't maintain whatever they put in, we're going to be in the same boat five or 10 years from now. And a lot of people have put a lot of time. In fact, yesterday, I was talking to my family, and they said, "Well, tomorrow night, I've got," and my daughter finished her sentence, "a sewer meeting." So I've been to so many of these, she knew what I was going to say before I said it. So thank you for taking the time to talk to me, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
All right, thank you, Ms. Powers. Let me check in and see if there are questions for you. Mr. Finley?
No questions of Ms. Powers.
All right, Ms. Kimmerite?
No questions for Ms. Powers.
Public staff?
Just a couple, sorry, Ms. Powers, how long have you been in your current house?
I actually had to pull it out. I moved in here in May of 2014.
Thanks. And you had mentioned that, I just want to clarify this, you have not had any specific issues with water, sort of?
I did have my pit double up one time, but I've never had it sewage into my yard or back up in my house. So I've not personally experienced any kind of damage to my house. Definitely not being able to shower or do dishes is definitely inconvenient, but it's not done damage to my house.
Gotcha, so no damage to your house, but you've had issues with regards to actual water service, not being able to do certain sort of necessities, like doing dishes, that kind of thing?
Yeah. And we can use as much water as we want, it just can't go down the drain.
Right.
And people have jerry-rigged draining their washing machines. I've seen people posting they're washing their dishes outside, washing their clothes outside, because like I said, you can use as much water as you want, you just can't let it go down the drain.
Got it. And so I think, just, I want to remember to ask you this question. You'd mentioned that you put together a spreadsheet of outages in the community. Do I have that right?
Yeah, so what I did is, I actually have, I've had like all my sewage emails in a separate folder, and I went through all my folders and found all the emails that came out from EnviroLink and put the dates that it started, it ended. And then I had two other people that have been involved in this kind of look it over and see if there were any that are missing. And then that's how I came up with a spreadsheet. Now, I would not say that this is 100% accurate. This is the best of my knowledge. There's probably been, I imagine there are times that the sewage was down, and we should have been conserving that we didn't get official notice. So it may have been more than 98 days. But I feel pretty confident it's at least close to that 98 days or more.
So, and sorry, this is 98 days of interruptions, or just want to clarify?
Yeah, and that's the start, the first one was August of 2020, and the last one I have is from December of 2021. And like I said, they're sending out daily updates and haven't said anything about the system being down. And also, too, I think people have mentioned about checking on Facebook and people posting. So I haven't, there have been people, individuals posting that they're having issues, but not a lot. And usually, in my experience, when a lot of people are posting they're having issues, that means that the system's down. But you could have Injul having a problem, and that doesn't necessarily mean the system's down.
Gotcha. And again, obviously, I know you've had some issues, but not specific water damage to your house. Have you noticed any difference?
No, not me.
Right. Have you noticed any difference in just the system or just issues that have been reported by folks since EnviroLink became operating in 2020?
See, since they've gone downhill, now, they also inherited a used car, too, basically. And, but they also, I don't feel, did what it needed to, to keep it in tip-top shape. I think somebody else gave the example, you know, if you get a used car, you're going to make sure to change the oil every so often and check all the fluids and keep it running, and they didn't do that.
Got it, thank you. I think I have.
And also, too, one of the things I wanted to mention, too, is about the communication. I do want to say that I am a board member, and I do have access to the emails we have for all the residents. And I have sent out an email, this was maybe a month or two ago, giving Deborah Massey's contact, and she's the one that sends out the emails. So I think the email communication has gotten better. They're sending out these daily emails. Everyone in the neighborhood. Every one in the neighborhood who the HOA has an email address for should have had the opportunity to sign up for those emails.
Okay, thank you.
But also too, they're in hot water right now, and that's why they're sending these emails.
I think I just have two more questions. Have you heard of the amended consent judgment involving Sandler?
Is that the one that he just did?
I mean, I guess it's somewhat recent, but yeah, there was a judgment against Sandler.
Yeah, I did, I do have it. I have a whole notebook of all kinds of legal documents related to Sandler. Let's see. Yeah. Motion to amend consent judgment, is that what you're talking about?
The underlying consent judgment, so the order that the motion is seeking to amend. And if you haven't heard it?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay.
Yeah, I have.
Yeah, I've heard of it, okay. I guess my last question is, is would you want that amended consent judgment to be sort of complied with and satisfied by Sandler before the sewer system is transferred?
Yes.
Yeah, no further questions?
Ms. Powers, I have a few questions for you. I just want to make sure I've understood your testimony. Sounds awfully similar to the testimony that we heard earlier today from one of your neighbors. But do I understand you correctly that since August of 2020, there have been 98 days of outages?
Yes.
So that's 98 days when you haven't been able to use your wastewater system?
Right.
And during those 98 days, were you, how did you learn of the, I mean, how did you learn that there was a problem with the system? Was it because?
So, the ones from October, there's three, one in October, and a big one in September of 2020. They were actually emailed by the HOA president and Facebook posts. And then, starting in November, we would get emails from Deborah Massey that they were down. There was one here that I put on my list that we were down for four days. And EnviroLink denied the system was down, but there were so many people posting on Facebook that they were having issues. I put that on the list. But like I said, I would not testify 98 days as 100% accurate, but I feel it's pretty close.
Okay. Do you?
And not to be undelicate, but you know, you go to the bathroom and most people flush without even thinking about it.
Right, well, that's my question, is are people learning?
And can do that for several days, and things get pretty gross pretty quickly.
Right, understood.
And I'm not a knee freak, but it drove me crazy having dishes piled up.
Understood. Do you, you testified that EnviroLink has been given the list of email addresses that the HOA has? And it sounded like...
Yeah, what we did is, because we could not share the email list. What I did is I sent an email and said that if you want to be added to the update emails, that you need to send an email to Deborah Massey, and she will add you to the list. So we didn't provide the list to her. I emailed everyone on the list and said, "If you wanted to get these updates, this is her email, and you need to email her." So everyone on our email list had the opportunity to be added to the update list.
All right, how many, how many members of the community are not included in the email list? Do you have any idea?
I don't have access to that. I don't know how many. You would have to ask EnviroLink, or how many people they have on the email update list.
Okay.
But they're in charge of that.
All right. Let me check in, Ms. Powers, with my colleagues to see if there are any additional questions for you.
Okay.
Commissioner Duffley?
Good evening, Ms. Powers. You mentioned a spreadsheet that you prepared. Did you want to provide that spreadsheet to the commission?
I've sent it to several different people, I believe, I think Mike Franklin maybe, is that? I'd have to go back and look and see who I sent it to.
Well, if you do wish to present that to the commission, you can work with public staff.
Okay.
Thank you. Nothing further.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Duffley. Commissioner Hughes, any questions?
Just one. Ms. Powers, you mentioned that there were several efforts to just, I guess, help out the community when you all were having problems.
Right.
How was that, how was that done and arranged? Was that, did any of the, was it Homeowner Association?
Well, the big one where, like I said, the, yeah, the Baptist men, they came and they set up portable showers at the middle school. And they also had laundry services where you could drop your laundry off and then come back like the next day, and they would have washed your laundry for you. That was coordinated by several members of the community, not by Sandler or EnviroLink.
To your, thank you, to your knowledge, did they take any steps to actually provide some sort of alternative?
At one, there was a point when we were down, and they did put porta-potties in several areas around the neighborhood. So they did put porta-potties in for one, at one point.
Okay. No further questions, thanks.
All right, Ms. Powers, I think there are no, there are no further questions for you this evening. We appreciate your being here with us tonight and your testimony.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right, Mr. McCoy, would you please unmute the next witness?
Hello, my name's David Shepherd.
Good evening, Mr. Shepherd. Do you affirm that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
All right, Mr. Magriero, take it away.
Could you state your full name for the record, please?
Yes, David Wayne Shepherd, S-H-E-P-H-E-A-R-D.
Thank you. And what is your address?
173 St. Andrews Road, that's in Eagle Creek, in Mooyawak, North Carolina.
Thank you. And are you a customer of Sandler Utilities?
Yes, I am.
Great. And did you submit an exhibit that you would like to be part of the record?
I submitted my, actually, I submitted the oral statements that I intended to give. I can do, I can either go ahead and read those, that oral statement, or if you wish to just keep it in the record and let me comment on some of the things that have been mentioned previously. I'd leave that up to you. My statement does cover a number of the questions that have come up, to include some of the failures, some of the causes of the failures, some of the costs that we're looking at that are being tossed around concerning the, the gravity system versus the vacuum system. It also addresses the life of the vacuum system, which is being misrepresented as 10 or 12 years, where it's actually 50 to 100 years. That's in my written statement, but if the commission has access to that, and if that's satisfactory to you, that's fine.
I guess just to sort of clarify, is your intent sort of to read the entirety of your written statement?
If I read it, that's probably what I'd have to do. So, I mean, that's up to you. It's, you know, it would probably take me four or five minutes.
Oh yeah, I think in the interest of time, I think what we'll do, if it's okay, is just seek to admit your exhibit into the record. And then, sort of, whatever remarks you want to make with regards to that statement, I think would be okay, presumably with the commission.
Sure, I'll just, I can come through and just, just point out a couple of things. First, I have lived here since, I have lived here since 2002. I was a, we were, my wife and I had the home built for us in 2002.
Mr. Shepherd?
So I'm familiar with, I'm familiar with the neighborhood and what's going on here since that time. Since, since around 2006, I've been, been the drainage committee chairman for the neighborhood. The drainage and the sewage collection obviously connects pretty considerably, because if we don't drain, it pretty much doesn't matter what kind of sewage system you have, it's going to have a problem. My, my son Matthew, Shepherd, lives in the neighborhood. My daughter Elizabeth Edwards lives in the neighborhood. So not only am I vested with my neighbors and myself, but my, my two children as well. My son, I have not experienced any backups, zero, on Eagle Creek Road. My daughter Elizabeth has not experienced any backups. My son Matthew has had flooding in his house and has received money from Sandler's insurance company. He had backups a number of times. He had sewer gas in his house that drove him out once. They had to put a sandbag on their downstairs shower drain to prevent that from happening. He's had, he's had sewage overflow out of his collection box right outside the house multiple times. And in the last year, they probably, EnviroLink has probably visited his pit. And I know I'm saying probably because I haven't, I didn't take the time to try to write everyone down, and it's not my, but a dozen to 15 times. That, that indicates the problem, I think, at the heart of this. There's been a lot of discussion about the fact that EnviroLink inherited a system that was, that was very used and very, very worn. There's truth in that. Sandler Utilities did not put the money in it they needed to put in it to do the proper maintenance based on the manufacturer's recommendations. That's very clear. The, the, I believe, and again, here's an opinion, I believe that from the beginning, from talking to the man who put this system in and bid to, bid to run it initially, who also lives in this neighborhood, and I'm sorry, he didn't testify tonight, that EnviroTech, when they first bid to run the system, significantly underbid the operations expenses. And from that point on, once those expenses were put in place and the rates were set, I believe Sandler was running behind a power curve from the beginning. I don't think they collected enough money to truly do what they needed to do on the system. That's not an excuse for them, them. I think that's just a fact. EnviroTech, when they began, when I first, first of all, I didn't even know there was a problem in the neighborhood either for a long time. The only reason I found out earlier than 2015 was because I was involved in drainage and because I was involved in the community. I moved around the community. I tried to help in various ways with the community. The, the only failures, and it was mentioned previously, but one previous speaker earlier on, I think misrepresented it. We did have, we did have issues when we would have major rainfall. You've heard that numerous times. Now, I'm talking about major storms. I'm talking about Hurricane Matthew, for instance. One of the commissioners earlier asked about the 20, I think about 2015, that was Hurricane Matthew. We got 10 inches of rain in about eight hours. So the entire community was totally underwater, and that was, that was a pretty significant rainfall. Our two, two canals that drained the community were both completely full. The entire county, Currituck County, other than the very high points, were totally underwater. So we did have a major failure at that point. Prior to that, yes, there were some, some failures back earlier on, but they were, they were a part of the neighborhood. And, and there's another clarification there that I might mention. Susan mentioned, and she's very good at recording these type of things, that there were 98 days where, where at least, where we were without sewage. We have a number of lines that go to the plant. I think we have five. And if one line goes down, the whole neighborhood tries to conserve water. We're asked, "Gee, we've got a vacuum problem. We got a line shut down. We've got problems on that particular line. It services maybe 50 houses." The whole neighborhood is not really down. One line is down. But the rest of the neighborhood is having to conserve water to help that particular line. So, so 98 days, I'm not taking EnviroLink off the hook. I think they've done a poor, poor job of handling the system. I'll get to that in a minute. But 98 days, as Susan mentioned, she's seeing, she's seen emails that might have, might have meant 50 houses were down. 100 houses were down. Sometimes it was the entire neighborhood. For the, for the failure that we had in the fall of 2020, roughly three weeks, the vast majority of that time, the entire neighborhood was totally and completely shut down. Around that time, and particularly just before it, for a couple of weeks, they were rotating around with different lines that appeared being down. They were having issues keeping the system operating. And then it catastrophically cascaded and failed. And then since that point, just, it's just been one thing after another, particularly on weekends. This, this system depends, the vacuum system depends on, on a technician. If they get a low, low, low vacuum alarm at the plant, it depends on a technician to be available and get here within a set period of time. It's, it's less than an hour. And find where, find where a leak is, a leak, a leak in a pit where a valve will be stuck open and air is being sucked into that, that vacuum main, reducing pressure on the whole system. And we went through a significant period of time where the technicians, particularly on the weekends, if they got a trouble call on Friday night, we were in trouble. The whole weekend, the system was in distress because they weren't, they weren't responding. Or if they got a call during the night, they weren't responding. And by the time they responded, we had multiple pits down. Now they begin to shut down entire lines of the system to try to start getting it back up. And if they don't, the entire neighborhood goes down. So I, I know I'm, this is a complicated process, and I know public staff has an awful lot of information on how this system works. But I think that kind of explains, gee, we're, I've never had a backup in my house. But I've always, whenever they say there's a disruption in the system, I always tell my family, "We're conserving water. We're, we're not sending water into our pipes because it's not back enough, but it's going somewhere else." So, to, to address, I think, the conversation around 2020 when EnviroLink took over from EnviroTech. Up until that time, Bill Fried owned EnviroTech. He, he had, as, as far back as my memory serves me, he had qualified and trained people who knew how to address an issue, whether it be a single pit or bigger. And they knew what to do logically as a, as a troubleshooting operation to find that problem and fix it. And they also knew when they found the problem, how to fix it. They would come to a problem pit, and if a controller, which is the one that fires the valve to empty the pit, if the controller wasn't working, they put a new controller in it, they timed it properly, and they connect all of the tubes properly, and they go away from that pit, and that was it. That pit was repaired. You didn't see another problem in that pit until, if ever, maybe something else went down, maybe the valve or something reached its useful life, and they hadn't been doing their proper maintenance. After, and that was consistent from the time that I was more readily aware of the system and talking to the technicians that worked for EnviroTech. That was pretty consistent. They had people on that knew the system. And they had Bill Fried, who owned the company. If they got in a problem, like in 2015, he was out here in his hip boots, and he was working with the people, and he knew how to fix the system. The big difference in the switch over was in the first quarter, I believe it was February of 2020 when EnviroLink took over operation of the system. He still had several of the, of the EnviroTech technicians employed by him. By August, I'm gonna have to, I'm gonna have to put it this way, it was a hostile work environment, and, and those people left. When they left in August of, in August of 2020, we started having the significant issues in, in, in October, September, October of 2020. There was no one currently employed by EnviroLink at that time, in my opinion, and from my observation, and from the people I've spoken to, that had any idea what to do when the system started to cascade into a failure. They didn't know how to de-water lines. They didn't know how to handle the problem. And when it totally went down and all these lines filled with water, that was the catastrophic failure. And it took many weeks, and, and the assistance from Enviro, from Flow Vac and Air Vac, the major manufacturers of the systems, to help them bring that system back up again. When the, when the, I'm gonna call it, when the autopsy was done on that, I was able to, to get possession of, and I believe public staff also has, the field reports that were issued by the engineers that came to the, to the community in October of 2020, and I think early, early November 2020, to help them get the system back up and determine what they could do to keep it from catastrophically failing again. The, the field reports that I read were, while we know the system was old and we know we had old valves and old controllers that, that instead of being rebuilt and maintained on a regular basis, they were waiting till they failed, and then they were replacing them. So that was working. It's not the way to do it, but that was working. All of a sudden, we, we had a situation where we had people that didn't know how to rebuild those controllers. They didn't know how to rebuild those valves. They didn't know what to do, and they went to a failed pit. They didn't know how to time the controllers. They didn't seem to. The, the field reports concentrated on what was going on at the plant, what was going on in the pumps. Earlier on, someone was, was also asked, did they know what caused that failure in 2015? And they mentioned that, well, they knew one of the pumps went down. Well, those field reports told what happened. It was one thing after another. Oil and pumps hadn't been changed. Filter screens in the, in the vacuum pumps were totally clogged up. There was only a pinhole. There was attempts done to do electrical work in the panel without, without turning off the electricity. They shorted out... They shorted out, they shorted out a part, just over and over again. They were items that were clearly caused by someone who had no idea whatsoever what to do to fix the problem. If my car starts steaming under the hood, I'm gonna pull off to the side of the road. They didn't seem to even know how to do that. So, I'm not trying to throw anyone under the bus. I'm simply saying that when EnviroLink took this system in for a significant period of time afterwards, they just didn't have the trained personnel or the ability apparently to train them, although it was offered by the Flovac and Airvac people both, they didn't have the people trained to properly analyze and logically determine what the problem was and how to fix it. So, I've carried on for quite a while on that piece. I'm not sure how much longer you want to hear me talk about these items. I will address, Susan did mention the communications issue. The communications issues, initially, the HOA did try to help because we weren't getting any communication. We were getting zero. I'm a vice president on the HOA board. I have been on the board since 2015. And when we determined, when the board determined that the communications are so horrible, we tried to step in with our own email system and Facebook and tried to get information from EnviroLink, which they often did give us, and we would try to disseminate that. But remember, an HOA is, we're a five-member board who all have jobs and families. So, when a line would go down, they would finally let us know, and it might be an hour after the fact. And if one of us wasn't in a position at that time to be able to send an email, we couldn't send it right away. Even if we did, oftentimes, by the time we communicated that, that problem was passed and another line was shut down. So, EnviroLink, the HOA basically told EnviroLink, you need to handle this communications yourself. We are not able to do it in the proper fashion to do the best thing for our neighborhood. That's where the HOA got a little comment earlier on about us refusing to communicate with the neighborhood. We could not do it in an accurate fashion, and we reverted back to telling EnviroLink, this is your job, not ours. We will do everything we can to help, but we can't communicate the failures. You have to do that in a timely fashion. The, what else did we have? I think, I'm looking down my list now. The system life on the system, let me briefly touch on that. And again, cut me off if you need to at any point in time. The, let's do this. Let's talk about a lifetime, very briefly about the lifetime of the system. As I said, a hundred years. We've heard, and it's been printed in several bulletins, and in fact, on the last PowerPoint we got, the last town hall that was done, there was, there's a number put in that our system only, the vacuum systems only last ten to twelve years. I cannot for the life of me figure out where they're coming up with this number. I believe the council for EnviroLink mentioned that in this opening statement, that it was past its usable life. But, you know, it was installed around 2000, and this thing's designed, the pipes are designed to last a hundred years. The parts themselves, you know, the main moving parts in the pits we're discussing, there's two of them. There's a controller that, if you buy it, I think it's in the range of $500, but these things can be rebuilt over and over again. It's $35 in parts to go in that controller and takes much less than thirty minutes. In fact, I was told probably fifteen minutes to rebuild. And those do have to be done around ten years. So, that's the proper maintenance we're talking about, not waiting for a controller to fail, but going in after the ten-year mark and doing a general, just typical maintenance on every controller. The other removable part that fails in the pit, these two, is the valve that releases the sewage into the actual line itself. Same thing. The parts on that are about $40 to rebuild it. They don't have to be rebuilt until about fifteen years. And again, far less than thirty minutes of technician time at a bench to rebuild them. So, I'm not sure, it is clearly misinformation unless I am being told the wrong thing by the manufacturers over and over again, to say that this system has reached the end of its useful life. It has many years more to go. We do, however, have to do catch-up on it. These parts have to be gone, these pits have to be gone through, parts have to be replaced one at a time, and they all need to be looked at, and then you can move on to the next bit. Once that's done, we have literally an as-new system. The monitoring that's going into place now, the consent order has ordered a number of things, and out of that consent order has come the pedestals, which are being put behind a number of the pits. Those pedestals are gonna house the controller that fires the whole pit, getting it up, number or gets it out of the water so it doesn't flood out when we do get rain. But it also allows, the pedestal allows for the installation of a monitoring system on that individual pit that will allow the, anyone who has the app on their phone to see when that pit's firing, how much it's firing, is it working properly? And if it goes down, it tells them exactly what pit is, go to pit 108, this pit has failed. So, the current vacuum system we have is where it is not functioning properly because of lack of maintenance and now, lack of operators who know how to fix a pit when they go there. It is not dead. It's not past its useful life. It simply needs rehabilitation.
All right, Mr. Shepherd, let me stop you there. You've said a lot in your testimony, so I want to check in with council, see if there are questions for you, Mr. Finley.
No questions so far.
Okay. Ms. Kim Wright.
No questions.
All right. Public staff?
Yeah, just a couple. Mr. Shepherd, was there anything in your sort of oral testimony? Actually, let me reverse the order of that question. Is there anything in the exhibit you initially were gonna introduce that was not covered in your oral testimony?
Yes, I think so.
Okay. Mr. Shepherd, Mr. Magrera, I'll stop you right there. Let's do this. Mr. Magrera, I'd like you to file Mr. Shepherd's exhibit in the record for this hearing, please. And let's mark for, let's mark that document as public witness Shepherd, exhibit one. And so, we'll get Mr. Shepherd's exhibit into the record.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. And I would like to say, with all that I said, I just, I obviously, I think I said, I do oppose the sale right now. I supported the connection to Fort Wayne, but I oppose the sale at this point. I am familiar with the consent order, and I would like to see the terms of that consent order carried out by Sandler Mill Run before the sale is completed.
All right, I believe we've lost Mr. Magrera.
Sorry. I think in those last two or your last couple remarks, I think you addressed sort of the follow-up questions I was gonna have, so nothing further for me.
All right. All right, Mr. Shepherd, thank you very much for your testimony tonight. You obviously have covered a lot of ground, and I appreciate your thoroughness. Your last comments, you opposed the sale and you want to see the terms of the consent order carried out by Sandler Mill. Do you have, based on your experience so far, do you have confidence that Sandler Mill can carry out the terms of the consent order?
The current installation of the current pedestals and equipment that's going in is being done by Flovac Corporation. So, it's being done by the people who manufacture the parts. They know exactly how to do it. As long as Sandler continues to provide the funds to make those parts available, Flovac will have people out here and they'll be putting those parts in place. So, I do have, I have full confidence in it being done as long as it's under the administration of either Flovac or Airvac corporations.
Okay. All right. Again, thank you, sir, for your testimony. Let me check in with Commissioner Duffy, see if she has questions for you.
Questions?
Okay. Commissioner Hughes, questions for the witness?
No, I just thank him for covering so much ground.
All right, Mr. Shepherd, thank you very much for being here with us tonight.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. McCoy, would you please unmute the next witness?
Looks like no answer to this one. I'm gonna move to the next one.
Okay. All right, Mr. Hudson, you affirm the testimony about the issue will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, Mr. Magrera, take it away.
Mr. Hudson, could you say your full name for the record?
Yes, sir. James Aaron Hudson.
Thank you. And what is your address?
254 Greenview Road, Moyoc, North Carolina.
Thank you. And are you a customer of Sandler Utilities?
Yes, sir, I am.
All right, please proceed with your testimony.
Before I begin, I'd like to thank the board and council for allowing me and my fellow residents to give our testimony concerning these proceedings. I can't really add a whole lot to what's already been said, especially Mr. Shepherd's testimony was very succinct and captured, in my opinion, everything that we've experienced since this whole thing started. The only thing I would add is, our home began experiencing problems 2016 in the wake of Hurricane Matthew. We haven't experienced a backup per se, however, but similar to Mr. Powers. We have, we've experienced sewage in the pit, limited water hours, et cetera, due to the outages. My concern has to do with the transaction with Currituck Water and Sewer. I don't have data in front of me. I have been doing a lot of research on my own concerning this, but similar to my fellow residents that have already testified, my concern is a deep and grave worry over whether or not a gravity system is adequate to replace what we have. And I'm in complete agreement with Mr. Shepherd that if the existing system were properly maintained, we would not be in the situation that we're in. Research I've done has shown, given the strata, I'm not a geologist, I'm an analyst, but I'm not a geologist, the strata that the neighborhood's built in, a combination of fill and solid layers with a high water table lends itself to a vacuum system for sewage management for a number of reasons outside of the one that I just mentioned. Also, we experience seasonal flooding in the back of the neighborhood, and some homes do experience water in their garages, et cetera, that kind of thing. And this exacerbates the existing issues with the sewer. Now, whether or not, you know, is gravity ideal, no. From everything I've seen, absolutely not. The neighborhood is at sea level. When the water does come in, when we do experience flooding, it has nowhere to go. So, if the system were maintained as it should have been, then I have no doubt that we would be in the situation that we're in. But outside of that, I mean, I don't really have too much to add. I mean, you know, the testimony of those that went before me have pretty much captured everything that I was going to say and the sentiments that I have and my wife have. I mean, not too much I can really say to follow that up, other than, like I mentioned, a grave concern about a gravity system being put in, and everything that I've read would speak against that. And I actually have a thirty-six-page report that I did up on my own that I would be more than glad to send to anyone on the board if it was, if it has a place, if I could do that, if I'm allowed to do that. But outside of that, as I mentioned, I have nothing else really to add available for questions.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Hudson. Let me check in with council to see if there are questions for you, Mr. Finley.
No questions.
All right, Ms. Kim Wright.
No questions for Mr. Hudson.
All right, public staff?
Just a couple. Mr. Hudson, how long have you been in your current house?
Since April 2007.
April 2007?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And I think I heard you say that you have not had any issues of sewer. Let me see what I have here specifically, so I'm not misquoting you. I think I have here that you don't have really too many issues with, like, sewer backflow, I should say, per se. I just wanted to clarify slash confirm that.
No, sir, no backflow. However, our pit fills, every time we have a decent heavy rain, the pit will fill up. We've experienced those issues. Again, fortunately, nothing backing up into the home. But yeah, definitely raw sewage in the ditches between the home and in front of the home.
And when you've had some of these issues, have you contacted Sandler, just to sort of alert them of the issue and have it be remedied?
No, sir, we haven't. And Mr. Powers mentioned earlier, you know, the social network in the neighborhood, most of the information that I and my wife receive has been word of mouth, that or via Facebook, the neighborhood webpage. If we have one home that'll back up, it's been my experience that we'll refer to that because then they'll determine water hours, et cetera, that kind of thing, you know, how bad the outage is, you know, what contingencies are in place on the part of EnviroLink, Sandler, to, you know, to mitigate any kind of damage in that respect. So, yes, 2020, we did experience water hours, limited use of water, very limited use of water, I might add, which impacted, you know, ability to do laundry, wash dishes, et cetera. And it was, as they'll say, I mean, inconvenience, but more so for the homes that have children, are three or out of the home. But for, you know, anyone that has, you know, small ones, you know, it's beyond an inconvenience at that point. That's a quality of life issue. But yes, fortunately, no backup into the home.
Thank you. And have you observed, noticed any differences in the performance of the system since EnviroLink became operator in 2020?
Yes, sir. I mean, as I mentioned earlier, Mr. Shepherd captured everything, pretty much that I was going to say in regards to that. And I believe that, again, my opinion only, I believe that they're kind of hitting it harder because the sale is at stake, and, you know, they want to put the best foot forward. Again, that is opinion only. And I have, you know, a series of suspicions behind that, but I don't feel that that has a place in these proceedings. So, outside of that, I have nothing else to add to that point.
And then last two questions. Have you heard of the amended consent judgment involving Sandler?
Yes, sir, I have. And I'm in agreement with the other residents as far as, you know, how they feel that this thing should go. A hundred percent in agreement. I think it should be reviewed, and it should not be able to proceed.
No further questions?
All right, Mr. Hudson, let me see if there are questions for you from the commissioners. Commissioner Duffy?
Yes, Mr. Hudson, thank you for your testimony. You mentioned that you prepared a thirty-page report, and I would be interested in reviewing your report. So, if you could work with public staff and Mr. Magrera, I didn't want to put you on the spot, but if you could work with him and have that filed as a late filed exhibit.
Yes, ma'am.
We'll do Commissioner Duffy.
All right, Mr. Magrera, we will mark that exhibit as public witness Hudson, exhibit one. All right. Commissioner Duffy, anything further? Okay, thank you. Commissioner Hughes?
No, thank you.
Okay. Okay, all right, Mr. Hudson, thank you very much for being here with us tonight and for your testimony. You may step down, sir.
No, thank you again.
All right, Mr. McCoy, let's try one more time for Ms. Price, let's see if she's on the line. You receive any response, Mr. McCoy? Is there someone on the line? All right, well, I do not hear a witness on the line, so I will conclude that Ms. Price is unavailable to testify tonight. So we've come to the end of our list, Mr. McCoy, I'll just have you confirm that there are no additional participants tonight?
No, there are not, that's it.
Thank you, sir. All right, with that, thank you very much, everybody, for your participation. I'll check in with council to see if there are any matters we need to discuss before we adjourn. Not hearing any.
Well, there are no matters that we need to discuss, but I assume the commission's practice will be to request reports from the companies on the positions that the witnesses have made at the public hearings.
We will do that, we will do that, and we may do it by order, but you might as well go ahead and get started on those reports.
Will do.
Chair Mitch, I believe that that's covered in the procedural order that had already been issued, there's a deadline for the report.
All right, and it may be that we issue a follow-up order, so just stay tuned. All right, anything further before we adjourn? All right, thank you very much, everybody, for your participation tonight, and we will be adjourned, let's go off the record, please.